Okay, let's get the meeting started today at 2:02 PM. It's welcome to our March 6th meeting of the Rules and Open Government Committee. Let's start with Roll.
Here.
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 Here. All right, we're going to start by reviewing the final agenda for next week's City Council meeting on March 12th. We have a 9:30 closed session, 1:30 regular session with a canceled evening session. Consent starts on page four. I'm not saying consent, oh yes, consent, page four and five. Section three is on page six. We have our annual summary of labor negotiations, amendment to the municipal code for gift ordinance, and a review of retirement pension and post-employment healthcare plans. Section four on page seven, cannabis business regulation and operating fee comparisons, and then nothing until land use. We have land use consent, item 10.1, which will be heard immediately after consent. Do we have any public comment on next week's agenda?
No public comment.
And yes, there is an ad sheet, so maker of the motion can include that. Any hands, Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you. I'll motion to approve the March 12th agenda, however, deferring item 4.1 a week and including the ad sheet in the agenda.
That was a deferral of 4.1?
The cannabis business regulation, yes, for one week.
Okay.
So to the 19th.
Doesn't matter to me, but is there a reason for that? Is there a problem with that? Is there? I guess we should look at the 19th agenda.
No problem from the administration for that whatsoever.
Yeah, and just to give folks some context in case, because you said the reason for that, I know that wasn't the, but I'll answer, it's just simply that there's a brown app working on the topic, and I think we just need a little bit more time to work through a few things.
All right, sounds good. Any other comments? If not, we will move to a vote. All right, the agenda's approved, 5-0. Now we'll move on to our meeting on, review of the agenda on March, for March 19th. So it's a morning and afternoon session. Consent starts on page four and ends on page five. Section three, we have the approval of the mayor's March budget message, and then we skip ahead to section eight. We have two items for our housing to be heard concurrently, items 8.1 and 8.2, and that is it. Any speakers for?
No public comment.
All right.
Move approval of the March 19th agenda.
Second.
Okay, we'll move to a vote on this item. And that agenda's approved, 5-0. So we're on to our consent calendar for today's rules meeting. We have three items on consent. Any comment, public comment on consent?
Gail Osmar, please go ahead and make your way to the podium.
So when you say consent, I can talk about the study session coming up?
Thank you.
That's okay. So I really agree with having this study session. The thing that I'm not 100% in agreement with is I've talked and talked and talked about having unhoused people on the ground now to be part of meetings, to be part of CAC, to be part of maybe a study session and other meetings, and nobody ever does that. This is nothing against the lead people, I have very good friends that are lead members, but why can't we have people living on the ground? Sometimes I feel they don't want that because they don't want to hear what's really going on. I could be wrong, and again, I apologize to Housing and Omar, but we have to talk to people that are on the ground, not people that used to be on the ground. We don't even have people involved in our CAC at the safe parking. Why isn't anybody from the RV safe parking? There's a lot of problems in there, but maybe they don't want to hear it. So when we have these, and I've spoken about it, I have brought unhoused people, they're pretty good speakers, I think, maybe, I don't know, but they're here. You all have said you kind of like them and are happy they're here, so maybe let's get some unhoused people to be on some of these committees. Thank you.
Back to the committee.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for the consent calendar or a question? All right, and Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. Lee, I don't see on here that the county will be here. There's a, number two says regional and county of Santa Clara contacts, the role of key regional partners, and then there's a vignette, but it doesn't actually say, will someone from the county actually be here?
It's my understanding that county staff is going to be here, but I can definitely follow up if that's incorrect.
Okay, I would really appreciate it because I know we discussed this with the community plan and homelessness, and I really think it's important for us to see, visibly see the working together and to hear from the county staff about that. So I would appreciate that. I'm not really, the vignettes are kind of a new thing for a study session, so I'm not sure about what we'll actually be hearing, but I think it would be helpful to us to hear from the staffs from both the city and the county about maybe what limitations there are, or what troubles there are in working together, what areas of duplication there are that we maybe could pull out. I'd appreciate the, kind of the pros and cons of that, of working together in this study session. The vignettes seem nice, but I'd like a little more practical information. Thank you. I'll move approval of the consent.
All right, Vice Mayor Kamau.
Thank you. Just to follow on to my colleague, Deb Davis, I don't know about the vignettes, but what I'd like to know is periodically we have had unhoused people come to us and tell us, oh, there's something wrong with the arena, oh, there's something wrong here, oh, there's something wrong there. And I would like to know, what's the disposition of all those things? Because, you know, is it like, okay, you know, someone comes to talk to us and it kind of falls in a black hole, or, you know, what happens, right? I will be going to the arena, it has taken me a long time to be able to, you know, like, get an appointment to go see the arena, because I want to see for myself. And I guess I'm seeking to understand what happens when someone, anyone, says there's something wrong. What is the follow-up, and what do we do about it, or what do we don't do about it? And who do we hold accountable? Because at the end of the day, there's a lot of people working on this, and I know that it's really great work, and I appreciate the people who do this work, but I really don't understand, when someone comes to us in this forum or at the full council and says, there is something wrong, what do we do? So as part of this, I'm hoping that we get some kind of idea of what that is, because that's not clear to me, so. And maybe it's just me, maybe it's just me. Maybe other council members are much more in tune to what is, but for me, it's sort of like, very nebulous, so I need clarity on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comments. We have a motion in a second. I look forward to the discussion, but it is a good point that we need to make sure we're including the county, and the county is an important partner, that must be there for, I think, this to be a successful study session, so hopefully we'll get that finalized. Let's vote on this item, on the consent calendar. All right, consent calendar's approved, 5-0. So now we're on to our section C, Rules Committee Reviews, Recommendations and Approvals. We have a memo from Councilmembers Dwan and Batra who are in the box waiting. We're going to let them give an overview, introduce their item, and then we'll move to our discussion. We'll let you decide how you're going to coordinate that.
Perfect. Well, council members, thank you for being here and good afternoon. Lives are being lost out there. Our environment is being destroyed. Residents being impacted, businesses are leaving. It's time to lead on these issues to save lives. This is why we work together to ask you to support the scalable pilot program and allow us to discuss the entirety of this plan with council, to make this a reality. When successful, we believe this can be scalable, citywide, as a cost-effective and holistic way, approach our city needs to end streets and watershed homelessness while saving countless of lives and improving our quality of life right here in the city of San Jose. San Jose Love, which is end with L-U-V, Lift Up Lives, have received nearly unanimous support in letters from the public for this agenda item. I will hand over to my colleague, Councilmember Batra.
Thank you, Councilmember Dwan. Good afternoon, council members. As was seen at the council meeting yesterday, when the stormwater permit refusal or rejection was discussed, there are legal and financial consequences to not handling the homeless shelter issues properly. It's not a matter of how much we can do, it's a question of, is there is an expectation, there are rules which other organizations, state organizations, expect us to be doing. So we are here to propose a pilot, we'd like your support. We ask for your support for our joint pilot program. We call it SJLove, as my colleague described, it is L-U-V, which is lifting up lives. Let it be heard for discussion with the entire city council. We have worked with the offices of the city attorney, city manager, the directors of planning, building code enforcement, the budget office, IT, environmental services, housing community members, and more, to present to you a real, workable, scalable solution. We need to do everything in our power to deliver as quickly as possible dignified shelter for our unsheltered and to meet our legal and financial obligations. Okay? Mr. Dwan?
We'll come to a point, we need to act, and I think it's important that we look at all options, including this program. I will hand over to my chief of staff, Jonathan Fleming, who has a very short presentation for us, which explains the overall concept of the San Jose Love Pilot Program.
Thank you, council members. My name is Jonathan Fleming, and I am Councilmember Dwan's chief of staff, and here's our very short presentation for you on SJLove. SJLove, the background for our pilot program is this, you know, a city may address its quality of life issues and apply its laws if there are enough beds in an area or in a city. That was ruled by the Ninth Circuit, and below is a little graphic that kind of shows, pictorially, there's room for nine people, we've got an extra bed, let's help that person, and let's get them into shelter. This thing, here we go. But what happens when the shelters and the beds and the housing are full? You know, that's the big question, and that's where we're at right now, is if there's no place for people to go, people suffer. And additionally, the Ninth Circuit Court ruling in the Martin v. Boise case said that you cannot apply your laws or address those quality of life concerns, and so that's what this picture kind of shows, and then it escalates to this, you know, where we see the RVs and we see tents, you know, our creeks and watershed become polluted, and we have an increase in these quality of life concerns. And most importantly, people who are unsheltered have nowhere to go, and they need help, they need support, and that's why this pilot program was created. I mean, this situation's happening in San Jose currently, right now. All of our residents are seeing it, we have about 4,600 people who are unsheltered, and we see that also with a burden on a lot of our first responders, about 30,000 calls combined between the fire department and the police department, you know, and we don't really know the full total, but we know it's somewhere in the range of $50 to $75 million that this impacts. So the pilot program was created to kind of isolate a smaller portion of our city and say, look, we want to create enough beds so that we can shelter people within the pilot area. This would allow us to maintain our, or to be in compliance with the Martin v. Boise, the Ninth Circuit ruling, and as long as the beds are available, we will be, remain in compliance. And that's really one of the keys, we're looking at, you know, creating a shelter and the new EIH that's in construction right now, reserving that for the people within this three district area. And we need to have a bed available at all times, I want to emphasize that point. So we move on, and once the pilot area is there, we have enough beds, people can be sheltered, we can start to clean up the environment, clean up our creeks, clean up our neighborhoods, help people get from a vulnerable situation to a place where they can be helped with wraparound services, and that's what this pilot area does for us. And so to summarize kind of what we're talking about is a three district program, districts two, seven, and 10, provide enough shelter beds to be in compliance with the court ruling, provide storage for personal property, and use state laws to update certain municipal codes to give us authority to help address those quality of life issues. We want to be able to protect and support our homeless neighbors with wraparound services and give them dignified shelter with those onsite services. And then that would allow us in the neighborhoods to be able to apply our existing laws, help address those code enforcement concerns, and really show the community that the city is addressing this and more. You know, we look at the pilot area, there's about 1,600 persons who need help, 1,600 unsheltered persons, and we're looking at about 11, maybe 1,200, you know, current beds in the area and beds that are in the pipeline. So that means we need about 436 beds or so to be able to just have the very basics, you know, to be able to support people. But we've been told by the city manager's office, these numbers may be off, they may be off by a large portion, which is why this discussion is talking about an 800 to 1,000 person shelter, which would be constructed using a pre-engineered structure that's about person shelter, which would be constructed using a pre-engineered structure that's about 150 to 200 people or more per building. These structures exist in the real world. They take a matter of weeks to erect, not years, they take weeks. And they would all have dedicated space for these onsite services we've been discussing. The South Hall of the San Jose Convention Center is an example of one of these pre-existing or pre-engineered structures. San Francisco has multiple navigation centers for our unsheltered community. Even Hawaii has it. And what's really cool about them is, is once they're built, the interiors can be customized. So whether it's for able-bodied people that can use bunk beds, or a family that needs, you know, four walls and a roof, you know, locking door, or maybe somebody with disabilities that needs something more, you know, we're able to customize it for the people that need the help. And it doesn't mean that, you know, one shelter's built one way and it stays that way for the entire duration. It can be modified as we go through. And that's a pretty cool concept. This is another navigation center in San Francisco for about 200 people. It's basically the exact same concept that we're discussing here in this SJ Love Pilot Program. And this is really cool. This is Reno, Nevada, and this is a shelter for 1,000 people. It was created in 60 days, two months. And they have onsite mental, you know, rehabilitation, medical, and more, and it's considered to be the most affordable shelter on the West Coast. So the goal again is create the pilot area and then scale it to a citywide holistic program so that our clean, safe neighborhoods and environment go citywide. If this concept works, why not expand upon it, find other locations for more facilities like this, and really help and save lives? So I hope that was a very quick presentation and kind of gets the message across about what the SJ Love Program is, and we're all here to answer questions if you like. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We will start by going to public comment.
I have three speaker cards right now as I call your names. Please start going ahead and making your way to the podium. Gail, Bob, and Debra.
First of all, maybe Tully Library should have been open for the winter, no disrespect, but maybe if you want to help people, we should have gotten Tully Library open. You're not even going to get a... I'm sorry, but you're not even going to get 100 people going into this. This is absolutely crazy. People aren't going to go in living in a thousand-bed shelter. And number one, who's going to run it? Some of our places now aren't even been running right. Look at the arena, like the vice mayor was talking about. Look at these other places. Who's going to run it? What nonprofit? They can't even keep up with what's going on now. I mean, this is not the answer. We can't have 1,000 people. You're never going to get 1,000 people. You're not even going to get 100 people going into a shelter. They don't want to go into shelters. They can't bring some of their belongings. They can have one or two bags. You say they're going to have storage. They don't have storage at a lot of places. There's no services. Sometimes the staff is not very good. Shelters are horrible. That's why they don't want to go into them. The diseases, unfortunately. So let's think about this. This is not the way to go. It's a waste of money. It's a waste of the general fund money or any money to put 1,000 people in one area. And who's going to be working on this? What staff? You're going to take staff away from working on the real changes and the real solutions we need with the unhoused? This is a crazy idea. I'm sorry, but let's not pass this. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Bob Brownstein. There are a number of serious flaws in this well-intended proposal. First, interim housing isn't a final destination for the unhoused. It's a bridge to long-term housing. And experience shows us that interim housing only fulfills that goal when it is a path either to affordable market-rate housing or to long-term subsidized housing. Now, affordable market-rate housing isn't available in San Jose. The proponents cite a project that they believe works in Reno, but the rents in Reno are 55% of the rents in San Jose, and the proposal does nothing to generate additional long-term subsidized housing. So this proposal would build a bridge, but it would be a circular bridge, eventually leaving people right back in the streets. Secondly, the proposal clearly depends on cooperation and coordination between the city, county, and state. I served for 12 years as chief of staff of a county supervisor and eight years as a budget director for a San Jose mayor. The way to encourage cooperation is to invite these entities at the front end to meet and design a project that everyone agrees with. In this case, San Jose designs a project and then invites the others to discuss how they will pay for it. That's a recipe for failure. I could point out many other problems. Who will provide security on the site? How massive will the city's liability be if it induces people to stay in a place that proves to be unsafe? What are the moral and operational questions associated with citing the biggest homeless shelter in the Bay Area in a low-income, undersurfed council district? And more. Rather than jumping on this bandwagon if the city's really interested in developing some kind of innovative pilot?
Thank you, next speaker.
Hi, my name is Debra Townley, and I'm a person with lived experience. I was homeless with my son for four, for five years, and the first thing that I did was sign up for housing, go and try to get services. And I went to the biggest shelter in the county, which was Little Torture. I'm sorry, they call it Little Torture, but it's actually Little Orchard. I didn't mean to actually say that. I'm trying to be reasonable. This is horrifying to live. It's horrifying, and it echoes Auschwitz. And I'm frightened also because at the same time that you're building this mass shelter, you're also creating a ban on the homeless, which will force them, by threatening them with incarceration and by institutionalizing people in mass shelters, that is not the answer. No one has spoken to people en masse who are experiencing homelessness right now to ask them what they need. No one ever asked me what I needed. They said, "This is what's available." And some of those things didn't work for us. I'm not going to go to someplace like that with my son, with my child. I also have disabilities, one of which is an immune-compromised system. I would die there. I'm not going to be able to get sleep there. My son has sleep apnea. He would keep people awake, who would then beat him up in the morning. The stress level when you are homeless is very high. When I was in college and in a psychology class, we learned about a very famous experiment where they put a lot of mice in a small area, and they ate each other. This is inhumane. We can't continue to create things that don't work. The Home First Model is over. It's obsolete. We're not doing that anymore. We have to come up with new ideas.
Thank you. Back to the committee.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for the comments and for being here. We'll start with Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Jonathan, Councilmember Dwan, and Councilmember Batra. I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I think what I do agree with, I obviously didn't sign on to the memo, but I do agree with is the spirit of trying to bring forward solutions to the problem that we consistently face. I know it's a big issue in District 2, big issue in District 10, District 7, obviously, and quite frankly, all over the city. I just wanted to, and I suspect this is going to be the first of other comments you're going to hear, but, or not comments, but maybe questions is more what comes to mind for me. And so it seems to me, at the core of this is, how do we, and correct me if I'm wrong, is, we have an issue, obviously. The issue is, we have many folks living on the street in our respective districts. And so how do we stand up affordable, less costly shelter for some of these individuals, right? And I know there was a lot of photos provided related to some of the stuff in Reno, or even, you know, the, what we used in the pandemic right there by the convention center and such. So some of the questions are around that. And so what I'm curious about is, I know, and I don't have the memo in front of me, but I have some notes, but I know in the memo you all touched on, obviously, the interaction between your ideas and as it relates to getting the county on board to, in your mind, to do their part, right? And I think we all feel similarly to a certain extent. How do we, they have traditionally, especially like the fairgrounds, the supervisor for that particular area has traditionally been against, or not supportive of doing things at the fairgrounds. You know, there's earthquakes are going, there is a lot of interest in that location, there's a lot of stuff going on. And so how do we address that? Because I see that as one of the challenges that I read in the memo, is that, alluding to the fairgrounds being part of the solution, when we know that they're not open to that, how do we? And then I think there was also, so as you answer this question, you can also touch on, I think there was a mention of a ballot measure. And so I'm trying to understand how you sort of, looking forward, see this resolving that incongruence, if you will, that doesn't make sense to me, and I'm just wondering if you can comment on it. Anyone, really.
I think it's important that we continue to have dialogue with the county. If we stop the dialogue, we'll continue to not have any solution. That is only one out of four designated site that we're looking at. And this whole thing is about preliminary, it's about us bringing it up towards the council to discuss as a whole.
Yeah, and I think to really answer your question there, you're right. The memo does mention a ballot measure. It mentions for staff to go out and explore ways to make these sites work at, you know, really any means possible, because we're in a crisis and we want to help people. So the county has historically said no, or stopped talking with us, is what we were told, about the fairground site. So if that's the case, and we want to build a shelter, and that's an amazing location with services all around, there's medical facilities nearby and more, we've asked staff to look into the exploration of a ballot measure for November to potentially have the public, the residents of Santa Clara County, decide if a few acres at the fairgrounds is worth reserving for a program such as this so that we can help people.
Okay. I guess, okay, that's sort of where I thought it was going, and so I don't know the mechanics of that, right? Us, the city of San Jose sponsoring a ballot measure that is going to have an impact on the county and sort of the implications of that. And so, anyway, so I think there's some more to understand there, but I appreciate that if you have any thoughts on that.
Yeah. There's a lot more to understand there, and that's why it's really important to get this and direct staff to be able to do that work. You know, that's really important because once they have the ability and the funds to go out and study this and start talking, we're hopeful that, you know, the county will see the program and say, "You know what? This is a really good idea. Let's do it." Reality, are they going to do that? Probably not. But at least we can open up dialogue and exhaust all other forms of possibility before we go that route, if it's even possible. But we need staff to be able to study that, to see how to make that possible.
Okay. All right. The other question I had is, there was, I think, a few of the folks with lived experience commented on the fact that, and I was, there's a question here, but that, you know, that the person wouldn't be staying in a shelter with that many people, and, you know, they have some medical conditions preventing them doing so. And so can you refresh my memory in the memo? Are you all thinking that what would be ideal are several different, like, let's just say we need 1,000 beds, having several of those sites across D7, D2, D10, or having one large location as, or interpreted by the public number?
I think the site could be multiple site or one single site. It can be contract or expand, and in any different ways and different geographical location.
Okay. All right.
But I am offering up, the four location is right in D7.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, I know there was a mention of the Singleton landfill, former Singleton landfill. Have you all spoken to staff about sort of the challenges with that, opportunities or impediments that exist that would prevent something from going there, whether it be storage of some of the property of people or even housing people there? Can you guys talk a little bit about that?
So out of 90 acres of the Singleton, we'll probably only need approximately three to five acres, right? The rest of it could use as a RV storage. And my understanding, in 2008, the city did have a declaration that the site could be used for...
A bunch of different purposes.
Specifically of...
Baseball stadium.
Well, baseball stadium, what was that?
Soccer fields.
Soccer field, and then even a fire station, and also a IKEA warehouse, central warehouse, so.
All right. Okay.
And to really answer that question, yes, we have, we spent a lot of time with planning building code enforcement. We spoke with ESD about it. There are challenges to using those sites, but they told us that they are developable as long as we go through a state process, going through the LEA and other agencies at the state, to figure out what needs to be done to open those places up so that they're safe and that they're clean and that it doesn't pose a danger to anybody there. We know that the Singleton, for example, was surrounded by residential housing already, so we do know that there has to have been some of the area cleaned up so that you wouldn't be able to put housing there otherwise. But in order to study it again, we have to be able to say, "Hey, staff, you need to look at this." And that's really been the consensus. So is it possible? It's possible, but we're really not going to know until, you know, they study it.
Okay. All right. And then the very last question I have is, there was, well, even in the, in this presentation that you gave, although it has less information than the memo, but you all sort of broke down all these numbers related to the costs associated with building some of these structures that we can, per you and per what I've heard too, right? We can stand up fairly quickly or more quickly than we have other structures. Where do we get all those numbers from? And do you have, do you have a sense or a feeling that the city, the professionals in the city, if you will, that they would agree with those numbers? Or do you, you know, what's your conversation been like?
I think so. So to answer your question, there's a company that is online, and they're the ones that build these pre-engineered structures. And they've detailed in high detail all of the, you know, what you're asking for, the timelines, how many people they help, they have pictures. So we copy and pasted off of the site and said, "This is what they've done." And they have a track record of doing this. So that 60 days for Reno, that's published, that was in multiple news articles and more. Their cost was about $10,000 or less per bed, which is pretty substantial. And then those other ones that are on there, like the San Francisco Navigation Centers and more, they're on their website as well, and they detail those costs. I feel like we're pretty close. You know, we tried to put in a little safety margin because it seems like things are always more expensive. But I feel like we're pretty close, and I'd love for staff to be able to go in there and really look at it. We asked Jim Shannon from the Budget Department and others to also take a look at these numbers and see if things made sense, and they took a look at it and said, you know, "You're in the ballpark."
All right. Okay. And just two last comments. One is, I think for me, obviously with the conversation we had yesterday about the stormwater permit, it seems to me that we're going to need to figure out a way or a location or locations to put a lot of the folks that are living by the waterways. And so I think the, there is a, I think, to a certain extent, something that I'm interested in, out of everything you've submitted that I think is important, is looking at these structures and seeing if that cost really truly bears out at some point, and see if we can use that to do some of that work. But the broader concern I have is, you know, having been here seven years, we've gone through many iterations of ideas. I've seen a few during my time here, whether it be sanctioned encampments, whether it be something by the airport, on and on, right? And so I feel like we're always, we're, as a city, and oftentimes from direction from the council, we're going one direction, and then we say, "Turn left, turn right," and then we just, we just keep changing sort of paths and, you know, sometimes it's pilots, sometimes it's a direction from the council. And what I fear is that we certainly, I don't think we've figured it out as a city. And so again, I appreciate the spirit of it, but I'm afraid that this is going to take us down the path of, again, getting distracted from some of the stuff that's already being worked on. And so I just wanted to highlight generally sort of what my concern is. And so with that, I'll stop talking. I think there's probably other questions or concerns, but thank you.
Councilmember, can I make comment?
Sure, please.
I think you said, "The city has figured it out, and this would be a distraction." Did I capture it right?
Yeah, no, I think I'm trying to remember exactly what I said. We're trying to figure it out, and I don't think we have yet, but as we go down the road in trying to find solutions, right? At least in my mind, I mean, we need to try something. If it works, great, and if it doesn't, then we sort of veer left or veer right. But I don't think it's helpful generally if we keep sending the staff down different paths, seeking out different solutions. And that's just my general concern. I don't know if this would exactly do that, but that's sort of a concern that I have.
So Councilmember, yesterday it became very clear, when the stormwater discussion was taking place, that whatever city has been doing isn't adequate. taking place, that whatever city has been doing isn't adequate, and it's not even the right thing, because one of the main messages in yesterday's meeting was that we need to reevaluate and engineer a totally new solution. And that is why there was, because whatever we are doing, isn't, it's probably solving some of the homelessness problem, but it is not meeting state's requirements, it's not meeting people's requirement, it's not meeting the budget requirement. And that was my main objection yesterday was, that, hey, this is, the whole plan is basically whatever we have been working on. The proposal said we have to throw it away. There was a lot nicer words, I'm using pretty rough words. It was basically, we have to reengineer, we don't know the cost of it, we don't know what the implications of that will be to everything else we are doing. So I would say basically, the summary of that one is, that we don't have a plan which works. That is why we are in the state we are in, we're subject to fines, and we have to develop in the next few months, a plan which will be acceptable to the people. So that was my biggest, so this is probably appropriate time, since we are going through that extensive a reevaluation, that this should be part of that reevaluation, because this might be the solution.
Yeah, so I understand what you're saying, but my perspective is this, is like, that's fine, which I understand your, what you're presenting, what you're saying, but if we, as an example, staff's already going to start doing some of that work, right, and I agree with you that there, it seems to me, based on yesterday's conversation, they're exploring different paths, but if I already know, right, I'm just speaking for myself, and I suspect maybe other people feel similar, but if I already know the county's going to say yes, why am I going to send staff down this road, right? It just doesn't make sense to me. And so, and so that's part of the concern, right? I don't want them going and chasing these dead ends, right, that we've, I feel like they've been explored already, and I just, I can't see an opening in this memo that would say, aha, now they're willing, right? It just, I just don't see it. And I think, for me, I've said it before on different topics, is that I want to be very sensitive, not build and foster an antagonistic relationship with the county, because it's going to be, it's very important that we work well together, for the sake of the people living on the street, and for the sake of bringing all our services, resources together. And I think we need to tread carefully, right? I think we're all, hopefully rowing in the same direction, know that we're on the same stream, going down the same road, trying to solve the same issue, but when we start, and I'm very sensitive to the language in memo, for example, but when we start attacking the county and say, they're not doing this, you can do that better, you shouldn't do that, you should allow us to build it here, I'm just very sensitive to that, because I don't think, I think that infighting, I think, was very prevalent with our last mayor, and I wasn't a fan of that. And I think that unfortunately set us back more than it moved us forward, and I'm afraid that if we start going down that route, such as some of the stuff that's in the memo, that it's going to continue erode that relationship that's very, very necessary to actually solve this problem countywide. And so, that's sort of my thinking around it, to go a little deeper, but...
All right, well, thank you, Councilmember Jimenez.
And I'll stop talking.
Yeah, let's, we'll move on, just along those lines, I'm going to say, you know, we've been working really hard in the last couple of years to repair our long broken relationship with the county, and in fact, there's a memo that was just, they call it a referral at the county, that was just submitted this week by the supervisor representing my area, asking the county to chip in to help pay for half of the operating cost of our RV parking site. They're going to have a discussion and potentially provide us resources to help do that. We want to make sure that we have a relationship in which they're going to continue to chip in and willingly be a partner in the solutions going forward. Lee, I neglected to sort of start with a staff perspective, if you want to provide some, or if you'd like to hear the rest of the conversation first, just let me know, but if there's some input you'd like to provide on this, feel free.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Happy to listen to the committee members.
All right, Vice Mayor, I saw your hand up before, did you want to?
I can go. I just want to thank our colleagues, Councilman Batra and Councilman Duan, you know, trying to bring forth solutions to a really complex problem. And, you know, we all know this is a crisis, so I know that you're trying to, you know, be creative as much as you're able to, to move things forward. I personally feel that, at this time, it's probably a little bit premature. I think that in, when we're looking at the entirety of everything that the staff and the council needs to address, I don't know that, you know, sort of having a pilot and trying it over here is the way to go. We have a lot of very, very smart people who have really tried to comb the entire city looking for a location for safe parking, for RV parking, for, you know, EIHs, we have, I mean, they have, they have gone through, and, you know, I was not on the council prior to that, but I am aware that there was so much work done, trying to work with other governmental agencies, and we should continue to do that. But, you know, in terms of, where are you going to put this? Right? When the whole topic of trying to find space in the fairgrounds, the county really is a no, you know? And just because, you know, it's, we're saying it again, doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be a yes. So there's been a lot of time, energy, money, and resources spent, and I think that because we're entering a phase of even more limited resources, I mean, we're not going to have the big general fund money that, you know, that we wish we had, right? So the limited dollars that are there, I think we need to kind of figure out, okay, these are the things that have been working, these are the things that we want to try and do, and, you know, what is it that's going to get us the biggest bang for our buck? And I think that, to Councilmember Jimenez's point, while we're sort of trying to put all the pieces of the puzzle together, you know, having yet another thing for staff to do, to reevaluate and re-study. I am not a big believer, and maybe it's just me, I'm not a big believer of re-study unless something dramatic has happened that changes the situation. Restudying a study is not, you know, not good use of resources. So I think that right now, even looking at the Singleton site, that site has to be remediated. You cannot put people on there. And remediation is extremely costly. You know, we may own the land, but we don't, you know, being able to clean it up, you don't have to put people there. So I just, I just feel that at this time, I think, you know, thank you for the solution, but I just, I just think it's too premature without understanding everything else that's needed.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Foley.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this proposal to us. I have some concerns as well, along with my colleagues. Yesterday, we spent over an hour discussing the stormwater permits and the denial of it, and we authorized staff to move forward with an investigation and to come back with details on how they're going to implement the requirements of maintaining our, or of receiving the stormwater permit that was denied. That included the 500-feet restriction on encampments around our waterways. That's really critical. It also included an impact on the neighborhoods, which is really important. When we're talking about relocating unhoused around our creek beds, they're going to go somewhere. It's true, we don't have enough shelters right now, but I'm not sure shelters are the right solution either. I'm more of a fan of safe sleeping sites, as I was several years ago, when Councilmember Cohen and I brought it forward. But the idea that we're going to take, we're going to clean up our environmentally sensitive areas and relocate the unhoused to somewhere to, yet to be determined, and then if your memo is accepted, restrict where they can go, they cannot go in districts two, seven, or 10, which means they're going into maybe district nine, district four, district six, district three, back to the creeks. And we can't have them go back to the creeks. That's a violation of our permit. So I'm puzzled and a little conflicted. While I don't object to the idea of finding a solution, of course we want to find a solution, and we want to find a place where the unhoused can live, but I look at those pictures and frankly, I think, who's going to live in that congregate care? Some will, but most won't. I think of myself sleeping in them, some look like there's a lot of beds, and the woman shared her story of her son who has apnea, I have concerns about that as well. So the quality of sleep or lack of sleep in that many beds is a concern. I'm also concerned about saying, okay, we're going to build these things, we're going to have congregate care or some solution in district two, seven, or 10, and they have to be residents of there. So I'm concerned how residency is going to be determined, who determines that, and what if there's vacancies? That's just one detail, I don't expect an answer for that right now. Then there's the ballot measure. I have concerns about a ballot measure that would affect the county, that we as the city would be putting on the ballot, and paying for, by the way, out of our general funds. And a ballot measure costs about, well, last time we heard, around a million dollars. And when we're talking about budget issues, a million dollars is a lot, and the concerns and pull on our budget this year, that's a concern. So I have a lot of issues, not to mention, a couple of the areas are landfill areas, and remediation would have to occur, which also could be very expensive, expensive in the millions of dollars. And then I, you know, I look at the numbers, and I'm not sure about the cost of construction. And I just want to see, I want to see our plan come back around the stormwater solution or requirements before we add anything else on to staff. Finally, I'm concerned about the cost of this study and the staff time involved, and what are they, where are they taking their time away from in order to do this study? It can't be the stormwater permits, but it's the same group of people who would be working on it. Wouldn't it be, Lee? Because it's Omar, it's housing, it's planning, it's KIP?
Yes, it is the same team, Councilmember.
So we're under penalties with the stormwater permit being denied, and while this may be a creative solution, and I appreciate that, I really want to see the EIHs that we've planned for to go through, and I want to see the stormwater proposal come back. So I'm having a hard time saying I'm going to support this at this time.
All right, thank you. I'll make a few comments, or thank you for bringing this forward. I know where it comes from, because we've all been here. I mean, as councilmembers trying to solve a very difficult problem, we're all looking for, we're all trying to think of, what haven't we done? What haven't we tried? What are the new things to do? What can we do to solve this? And we've all spent time, and I don't know about all, I go talk for myself, I have spent a lot of time with city staff saying, what about this piece of land? What about this piece of land? I've got these eight vacant properties in North San Jose that I'd like to do something on. And we send staff after that, those pieces of land. So I know that this frustration comes from two places. It comes, one, from trying to find places to do this, which is very, very hard, and we've, some of us have been through bloody fights that have, you know, changed us as people almost, based on some of the land fights that we've had trying to find places for this. The second frustration this comes from is how expensive this is, and what are the other ways of doing this, and the cost? And I fully understand both of those perspectives, and why that frustration boils out with suggestions. And as Councilmember Foley said, we've put forward various suggestions over the years, we've pointed to pieces of property, we've asked for various studies from staff, and we've settled on a direction over time that has brought us to a place where we actually have some solutions that, while they are slow to work, I think are working. We know that the unsheltered number of homeless in the city went down last year, we're trying to double the number of sites so that we can actually, I think, make a more rapid impact, and we don't want to necessarily distract from that action. In my mind, there are, you know, the land piece is a tough one. We have, we directed staff several years ago through a council action to go out and find every possible piece of land you can find, whether it's Caltrans land, Water District land, and we focused for a while on city-owned property, because those are the only ones that we can move rapidly on, because we don't have to make a deal, we don't have to pay for a lease. Those are very limited and usually not in the best places. So we all end up focusing on other people's property, in this case, the county, or Valley Waters properties, or VTA, as we have in North San Jose, or a bunch of private property, like we did with the Berry SS Safe RV Parking Site, but, you know, those take a lot of time. I'm not convinced that the approach that's in the proposal actually saves us time because of the amount of work it would be to find that place. The actual building of something is one piece of it, but it's finding the place that's always been the big hang-up for us in finding solutions. And I don't know that something new and magic has occurred that will help us in that piece of it. On the cost side, though, there is something we can do, and what I'd like to propose as a way forward out of this discussion today, I think as we move forward in the budget discussion in the next few months, we're going to need to know, based on various models of types of shelters and types of housing, what are the various costs and timelines to do them? A congregate shelter like being pictured here may not be a good solution, but it may. I mean, we should include that in a list of menu of choices. We also have seen other cities do pallet-style construction. We've seen cities do the large individual tents on pallets that have seemed to work, and San Diego just opened one. We don't yet have a good MBA that says, here's how much each of these cost, so that when we move forward, and not just how much they cost, but how much each one would take to construct, because one of our frustrations is how long they take. So I would recommend that maybe we give direction as a rules committee to staff to do an MBA, which looks at the cost and timelines for various models of construction, so that when we have the discussion in the next few months during the budget debate, we can sort of give direction about what kinds of models we'd like as we move forward. Do you have any thoughts on that, Lee?
No, I think that's a great suggestion, Councilmember. And if I can just add my two cents, you know, I really, I think from the administration's perspective, we greatly appreciate you guys collaborating on the memorandum and how to tee this up. I would just say, I certainly understand the why here. In the 23 years I've been in government, this is the hardest thing that I've ever worked on, public policy-wise, implementation or resource-wise, and it's probably a really long way down to the number two item, quite frankly. I do agree with the Councilmember Foley that knowing a lot more around compliance and the resources that we have available are going to be really important. So I do think, from the administration's perspective, us preparing some type of manager's budget addendum that outlines some of the more low-barrier solutions, whether it's emergency shelters, navigation centers, shelters, safe parking, safe camping, you know, things that I would say just stop short of emergency interim housing, that is something the administration can definitely do and tee up for you guys. I would definitely say, from an operational perspective, the county is very important in that conversation, because we do have a responsibility to not only, obviously we have a compliance issue that we talked about yesterday, but part of the community plan is also working with our unhoused residents to get them through to more successful options and into a permanent solution. And so sometimes those emergency shelters or larger shelters are very at-risk settings, and so the services that we provide, our nonprofit community provide, and the county provide, are going to be exceedingly important for those to be successful, to move our community through those into more permanent solutions. So we, obviously, we worked with the county very closely on the community plan and homelessness. We were finishing that up in February of 2020, I want to say, and I still remember the meeting, where that meeting was stopped short, and we were all redirected to work on something else. So we ultimately adopted that community plan, and I think what's always fallen short from it is the next steps that were envisioned, which was around our asset mapping, revenue potential, operational efficiencies that were mentioned today by Bob, which totally agree... agree upon, but also joint implementation plan around some of these. So I do, obviously, the county and the city had a shift course over the last several years to address that issue, but there, there is a new board, there's new leadership, which Jennifer and I meet with regularly, and they're going to be important into that conversation. But for moving forward, the administration can definitely work on a manager's budget addendum that outlines some of these costs and timelines, especially with some of the state legislation that's currently on the table that may impact some of those timelines or speed those up, so that the council has that for a menu during the budget process.
Councilmember Foley, you want to follow up on that?
I do. Okay, Lee, I like that direction, but procedurally, that hasn't been noticed for this particular meeting, so don't we have to bring that back? We can't actually make that change, that, that action item here today, can we?
Councilmember Kevin Fisher, Assistant City Attorney. The, the general discussion is agendized. I think that since the manager's office is agreeable to, to the MBA, I, I think it, it works here, because you're not really, the action you're taking is for the city manager to, you know, prepare an MBA and come back. So I think it's, I think it's consistent, and again, that this general discussion was agendized. So if the manager's office had said, you know, we need direction, then I think you're right, we would have had to agendize it. But I really see this as kind of teeing off, off the discussion. So if the, if the committee's comfortable with it, I think we're fine from a, from a broadening perspective.
Okay, so then I would move that we authorize an MBA to come back, an MBA on the costs and timelines associated with various
Models.
Models of housing the unhoused. Does that cover it? Okay.
There a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Vice Mayor, can I?
I guess I just need clarification on what we're doing here. So the, the motion is to have an MBA on the cost of multiple models?
Yeah.
So leaving it open. And, and Lee, you have so much time to do that, yes? I mean, it sounds like you've agreed to, to, to this. You, you have, you have all this time. Now I know.
Yeah, I think, obviously, state legislation, you know, there, I know the Burnham bill's out there, so some of the timelines are in flux. And what I'm thinking of, because you guys were, as we said yesterday, you're going to want a menu of policy decisions or projects that you want to pick and choose from to address the various needs of our unhoused community, and also compliance from, from federal regulators. So I can't commit that this MBA is specific to the dollar amount, but I am picturing a high-level framework or menu of, these options typically could cost this much, you know, to build, here's what it would cost ongoing, and here's a reasonable timeframe within existing law or possible state law.
But, but not to do this pilot, correct?
Correct.
You're going to do models, models.
Yeah, I think we're just various building solutions.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that clarification, that's helpful. All right, do you have any more comments, or should we move to vote on the motion?
Chair, just, just a point of clarification. I think probably the motion should also take action on the request for the referral. So if the committee wants to not move the referral forward, I think that should probably be part of the motion.
Be explicit in the motion?
For clarity, yes. Because I think you need to act on the, on the referral request from, from the council.
Yeah, I guess that's true. So.
And reject?
Well, or just
Not move forward.
And deny.
Deny moving forward at this time.
And deny moving forward.
Yeah.
On the memo.
Yes.
All right, and that's it. Okay, that's for the second. All right, so we have a complete motion then. Thank you so much for that clarification. Let's move to vote. All right, that motion carries 5-0. Appreciate the great conversation and thoughtful, thoughtfulness that will help us move forward, I think, as we, as we proceed in this, in this difficult challenge that we're facing as a city. Now we're on to open forum. Any cards?
No public comment.
No public comment, open forum. Okay, we are adjourned at 3:05 PM. Thank you, everyone.